A second, we give it order. We're going to begin with a roll call, please.
Sarchet.
Here.
Savage?
Vogel?
Yeah.
Otis?
Here.
Approval of agenda, item number three, I'll ask for a motion and a second, please.
Come in.
Okay.
And roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walter, Walters has been here. Vogel?
Yeah.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
All right, moving on to public hearings, item number four, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed vacation of a right-of-way easement. So when was the notice published, Jenny?
July 12th.
Any written comments received for or against proposed vacation?
No, sir.
This time, we'll have a staff report and Travis, that will be you.
Travis Thornburg, city engineer. Super council's consideration tonight is a proposed vacation that was shown on the preliminary plat for Big Creek Ridge off of Northside Drive. Essentially what this vacation is, it's excess roadway, right-of-way easement, the names kind of changed depending on which document you're looking at. It's an old document that was established by Polk County when this portion of Polk City was out in the county. The reason we're proposing vacation of this easement is it's a, it's denoted as a right-of-way or a roadway easement. And then as part of the final plat for Big Creek Ridge, we're going to clean that up. We're going to add a storm sewer easement as well as an overland flow easement. And we're going to bring that up to standard using the, the city's current standard documents. Essentially, the benefit to the city is that you don't have this excess roadway easement, that it doesn't actually contain a roadway. And then you're also bringing up and clarifying the responsibilities of the storm sewer and overland flow easement in that area. As part of our recommendation, what staff would say is have tonight's public hearing in the first reading, hold the second reading, and then wait on the third reading until such time that Big Creek Ridge is ready for their final plat to be approved. Dean Rogear with the developers here for any specific questions about the property itself, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No.
No questions, thank you. So Jenny, anyone who's, well, is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed vacation easement? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
So we'll move on then to item A1.
After I do a roll call.
Oh, roll call, yeah.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Otis?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
All right, so we'll move on to item one then, under four A, first reading of ordinance 2024-1500 approving vacation. We need a motion and a second.
Come in.
Seven.
And a roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item five, public comments time. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. If you wish to speak, you should have contacted the city clerk and have we had anyone do that?
No, sir.
See, do we have anyone? We don't.
No.
Do we have any, anyone in the audience who didn't have time, our chance to fill out a public comment? And would like to speak to the council in the, in the public comment section? All right, hearing no one then, we're going to ask Andrew Skinner to come forward. Andrew is our new, our latest hire. He's our new finance officer. And we thought it'd be nice for Andrew just to come and introduce himself. And you can ask me any questions you'd like, council.
Hello, my name's Andrew. I graduated with an accounting and finance degree. I've been a finance director at a nonprofit before. I've worked as a financial analyst at Amazon before. Most recently being a finance analytics manager at Chief Transport. And I'm very excited to take this job and work with you guys and hopefully achieve some great things, so. And I've been in Polk City for just over a year with my wife Emily. Yeah, that's a little bit about myself.
Hello, Emily.
Hi.
Anybody having questions, Andrew?
No questions, but we're excited to have you here. Welcome and talk for you. Still being kind of new in Polk City, glad to have you here and glad to have you on with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item six then, consent items, and I'll ask for a motion and then a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yeah.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Moving on to item seven, business items, A, resolution 2024-97 approving Sunrise Ridge preliminary plat. Travis, you're up.
Super council's consideration tonight is the preliminary plat for Sunrise Ridge. This is in the same area as the Big Creek Bridge. Vacation we were just talking about, just two plots east. The proposed development has 105 single-family lots with several detention basins to handle the detention requirements set forth by Polk City Code. Those detention basins will be managed by a future homeowners association. As part of this preliminary plat, we're showing, or the developer has shown an outlot V for the southern portion of this parcel. That's where the existing home set, stead of Thomas Schleif exists. And as part of Polk City Municipal Code, the developer is required to show the entire property on a preliminary plat. This subdivision is part of the Northeast Trunk Sewer and as such is subject to the same connection fees that both Big Creek Bridge and Monarch Crossing have been subject to as well as the construction of several streets within. The current block plating layout shows not developing more than 30 lots off of a, a single access per Polk City Municipal Code. And our recommendation for approval is subject to a development agreement addressing Northside Drive, future improvements, sanitary sewer hookup fees, parking dedication, and directly responsibilities of traffic impact study prior to approval of any construction drawings for this subdivision. One thing worth noting that was presented to planning and zoning and your approval would and is recommended to include as well is the developer has requested a waiver of the block length. The maximum is 1320 and it's 14.
1430.
So just over 100 feet from Northside Drive to future Arbor Avenue. Both Big Creek Bridge and Monarch Crossing have been granted a similar waiver. So PNZ did recommend approval of that waiver request. As you can tell, Dean is here as well with the developer as well for you for any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'd be willing to answer questions as well.
Okay, so why don't we have a motion and a second and then we'll have any further discussion. So game, resolution 2024-97 approving Sunrise Ridge preliminary plat.
So moved.
Any further discussion or questions of Travis? Hearing none, let's then have a roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item B then, resolution 2024-98 approving Big Creek Commons amended preliminary plat. Travis?
Super council's consideration tonight is an amended preliminary plat for the Big Creek Commons subdivision. This property was recently rezoned with a portion of it being rezoned to R1A. The primary amendment to this preliminary plat is the addition of the existing property at 609 East Northside Drive. When originally approved in 2021, this pro, this preliminary plat did not include that property since William C. Naplal C. has acquired that property, definitely the existing home and is intending to put additional single-family homes in that area. Essentially, the, this amendment yields eight additional single-family homes from the previously approved preliminary plat. And then the other major change is the phasing of the project. Essentially, the phasing to now will include construction of a portion of Northeast 7th, the connection to Madison, and then a portion of East Springfield Drive as plat two. Plat three will then extend East Springfield Drive to the extension of East Vista Lake Avenue. Plat four would include the extension of East Vista Lake Avenue to make that connection to Springfield Drive slash Northeast 13th Street. And then plat five would finish it. The caveat in the agreement that was included in the development agreement that this council passed at its last meeting included the stipulation that that properties cannot sell more than 81 single-family homes off of a single access, which is East Springfield Hive. The purpose of the 81 single-family homes is it simulates what, you know, from a, from a traffic generation standpoint, is Polk City's current quote-unquote worst-case scenario, which is tradition with 20-something single-family homes and then a golf course clubhouse on the end. We equated the traffic generation for a tournament day on, of the clubhouse to what the equivalent single-family homes would be one. So the developer will be required to report every 10 closings on a home and every 10 purchase agreements that they agree to a property owner. So Cody will be able to track that and make sure that we're not get, that we're not exceeding that number A and B, that we can kind of be in communication with the developers. We start getting closer to that number to make sure everybody's on the same page, they don't exceed that limit. Tom Whitman with Nap is here with any questions. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so let's do like we did with A and vote for him in a second on resolution 2024-98 approving Big Creek Commons amended preliminary plat.
Come in.
Okay.
And then any discussion, any questions from council, Travis, the developer, or any?
Just point of clarification, they're doing part of 7th Street and then are we on up for the rest of 7th Street or is that developed later?
So through the park, the city is, that is the city's responsibility, correct? So they will, they will take it up to the park boundary line and they'll connect to Madison, but then the city would then essentially connect the two steps.
Are the plats going in numerical order based on what's on? I think it's sheet four in the packet.
Yes.
Thanks.
Not hearing anything else, I guess we will go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on then to item C, resolution 2024-99 authorizing and approving a loan and dispersment agreement providing for the issuance of general obligation water improvement bonds, series 2024, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Chelsea's going to speak on that.
Her review this evening is a loan and dispersment agreement through the state revolving fund to enter into a water revenue loan for the 1.5 million gallon water tower project. So just a reminder, the city's financing this project with a combination of both water revenue and tax increment financing, which is why we're entering into two separate loans for the project. So this proceeding that you're considering tonight is specific to the loan that will be repaid with TIP funding. And it will be not to exceed $2.65 million. We will have the loan proceedings for the other loan in the coming months on council agenda.
And it?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
All right, so let's ask for a motion to end the second and then we'll have any questions.
I know.
Second.
Anything from the council of Chelsea on this?
Chelsea, can we put out some educational materials on the financing here? Listening to the PNZ meeting, there was some confusion about it there and I'm thinking if PNZ isn't sure on how traditionally these are handled, that may apply to the greater population as well, so. I, I know it may take a little bit of work, but if we could look at other recent projects and look at how the balance has been used with revenue bonds, TIF, property taxes, whatever, and just kind of go through some examples and, and put that out so people are aware how this is being financed. It doesn't have to be an immediate thing, but I think that would be valuable. Is that?
Yeah, that's presentation on the website. Rob, we have PFM's presentation on the city website.
Okay.
It's a pretty lengthy presentation.
Yeah, it, I think that's a little bit more difficult to digest than most people will get to, and I don't know that, I can't remember, does it have comparable projects on there?
No, it wouldn't have comparable projects, but it would have like just the impact to the rate pair on that presentation.
Okay. I'll follow up with you.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and we'll ask for a roll call on item C, please.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on to item B, urban chickens. D1, first reading of ordinance 2024-1400 adding new chapter 58 thereto entitled urban chickens. And Chelsea's going to speak about that.
Per the city council's request is a proposed ordinance pertaining to urban chickens in Polk City. The council previously had a work session on this topic back in June and asked the city staff to prepare a draft ordinance. So here are some of the highlights of that ordinance for you tonight. The ordinance allows up to six hens per residence, no roosters allowed. It only allows for urban chickens in R1 and R1A zone properties. It provides that hens must be kept in an enclosed structure that is well-kept and clean. The enclosure must be 25 feet from every abiding property line. The chickens are only allowed in rear yards. There is an application and permit process that will be required on an annual basis. And then also a proposed fee, which you'll be taking further action on with item two this evening. And then the, the ordinance also provides an online, an online course would be required through Iowa State University. That online course is free and it does have some pretty good information. I sat and did just a little bit of that online course, so. Those are kind of the highlights of the ordinance. Amy assisted with drafting of the ordinance and mirrored quite a bit from the city of Ankeny's urban chicken ordinance. So if you have questions, either one of us can answer those for you.
Do users who take the online course receive some sort of like certificate or some email completion or something like that? Is your expectation that, that is provided? Or what's the expectation on? Just people stating that they took the course?
That's what I've seen on other permits is just checking a box and saying that you have taken the course and bringing it to their attention. I don't know that there's a certificate that's presented at the end, but.
I think the way I wrote the application was that they were required to provide said certificate. It's one of the documents that they're supposed to give, among other things, but if there is not a certificate, then I'll have to redo the application process. Right.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, but I think everyone should be clear about that. Say anything about it, invite something, so.
So Chelsea, a while ago, you had an awesome information that talked about covenants and which parts of the community's covenants allowed or didn't allow for chickens. So let's say somebody has chickens in a neighborhood whose covenants say they're not allowed. Who enforces that?
It'd be up to the homeowners association or the developer, whoever's in charge of the covenants, but it would not be city government.
So the homeowners would have to go to the developer and say this is a violation of the covenants.
Yeah, maybe still matter.
Would not be the city's to enforce.
Okay, any, so let's have a motion and a second on item number one, first reading of ordinance 2024-1400.
Before that, or is the, is the online course required every year?
No, just one time.
Okay.
The online courses require just once. You do have to register your flock every year and that registration fee, whatever we set it at, is for the flock, not a per bird fee.
Correct.
Yeah.
Be handled similar to our dog and cat licensing.
So we need a motion and a second on one, D1.
So moved. Second, and we would have roll call vote then.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
Moving on then to item two, amend fee schedule to add $50 permit fee for urban chickens. Chelsea?
We talked a little about this at the work session, but we will have some expenses accrued for every permit application that comes in. And we will need to send someone out to make sure that the setbacks are being met and that there's a coop. So we do have some costs involved with reviewing each one of these permits, so I would recommend setting the fee at $50. That was kind of the middle of the road. Some cities charged up to 100, so I kind of saw it all over the place from 25 to 100. My recommendation would be $50 per permit fee.
All right, let's have a motion and a second on item two and then any further discussion.
Before we do that, is that 50 seems high to me. I, quite honestly, I, I know we do have costs, but how, how does this compare to our pet registration fees? I don't know off the top of my head.
It's $10 per dog and cat prior to April 1st, and then it goes up to $20 and/or fines if there's an issue per, per animal. So again, this $50 would be for up to six chickens.
Okay, I, my preference would be to amend the motion and have it match the $10 pet fee.
I like that in theory, but we've got somebody that needs to go out and inspect the actual premises. Nobody's coming out and checking where we're keeping our dogs and cats.
Yeah, I would argue that the higher we make this, the less, we're going to have, less participation we're going to get.
Are we hoping to have tons and tons of participation or just the people that are passionate enough to do this?
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying we have chickens in town now and they'll continue to do it just as we have pets in town that aren't registered, so.
Fair.
If you make the price, you, people won't go through the bureaucracy of registering.
Well, the bureaucracy of registering is also going to be a barrier for people who just don't care enough to register anyway.
Well, the I don't see that as the hurdle.
So Amy. Do we have a motion to amend the fee here first?
That would be the appropriate thing, since you've already got a motion and a second on the table.
I don't.
You don't? Okay. Then whoever makes the motion should make whatever amount they're proposing. Doesn't have to be what's in the agenda at $50. If the motion is 10, then you ask for a second on the 10 and vote on that.
Okay, then either proceeds or it doesn't.
Correct.
So do we, do we have that motion?
I make a motion to amend the fee to $10.
If we have a second. So hearing none, motion fails. So we'll then move on and consider the motion that's here.
Whoever makes the motion, yeah.
Correct. So on item two, we need a motion to amend the fee schedule to add $50 permit fee for urban chickens. So we need a motion and a second on that. So moved.
Wait a second.
And we need a roll call vote.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
No.
Moving on to E, first reading of ordinance 2024-1600 amending chapter 19, city treasurer, and Chelsea's going to talk about that.
For the council's consideration is an amended city treasurer ordinance. We are just making one change and where it says city clerk, we will be changing that to city manager, doesn't make any. It would be the intention for the city treasurer to be the finance director and the finance director's absence would be the city clerk, so. It is a cleanup measure tonight. So that, thank you.
Okay, how about a motion and a second on E?
Come in.
Any further discussion from council? Roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight then, reports and particulars, anything from staff? Anything further from city manager?
I, I do have one thing. I just wanted to acknowledge Jenny Cobbin this evening. So back in June, Jenny received her certified municipal clerk certificate from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. I just, I think it's important to recognize these items because this is one of the highest certificates a city clerk in the nation can hold and Jenny has successfully completed that certificate.
Congratulations, Kelly.
Thank you.
Anything further from council?
I just have one thing. I know, I think most of us might got the email that about, not quite a year ago, maybe, I forget the date, but the UTV and golf cart conversation. I think I was the one that suggested we kick it down the road until Ankeny's had it in place for a year and I think we're about there. I'm still on the fence of what to do about this, but I also think, again, we keep seeing whether it's Facebook posts or individual experiences, scooters, I think there are all kinds of transportation in this community. There's motor vehicles, there's unregulated scooters, there's tricycles. And so I would be willing to revisit the UTV, and I look at you, Jeremy, because I want to ask something of you, but the UTV and golf cart thing, but in doing so, I would be more inclined to go with those if we could kind of use them as a, a bridge, you know, and really say from head to toe, let's think of all the ways you can get around this town and clearly communicate what goes where, what the rules are, where there's rules, what the guidelines and suggestions are, where there's not rules and we can't really put them in place. But yeah, like I said, I, I don't, I know that's more work for you, but to think about as we relook at these, because again, whether it's soon or not, I think I've also had personal conversations where people ask me to bring it up, but to think about how can we leverage that conversation, and again, I'm still on the fence, I'll say, on both of them, but leverage that conversation to continue to promote safety. I think there might have been a Facebook post earlier this summer about something, but I think just to think more comprehensively about a safety campaign around everything that's not motor vehicle maybe to go along with these conversations.
Okay. Anything else from council? Well, I would just add a couple of things. This is our last meeting in, in this room, so it's served us well and we'll look forward to having a much larger facility over in the new city hall for everybody to come and listen in to our city council meetings and add any input. The other thing, we had two great days of Four Seasons Festival this past weekend. It rained literally on our parade, but there were still a lot of people who showed up for the parade. We had a great time and then all of the events and activities on Saturday were very well attended. And I just want to thank everybody who I can, who volunteered to help with the success of that event and go Polk City for putting that on and looking forward to more Four City, Four Seasons festivals down the road. So it's in the books and we'll look forward to next year. That aside, item number nine is closed session, and so we'll need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Come in. Second.
And the roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Vogel?
Okay, so all those invited to stay for the closed session, please do so. Those who aren't, you are free to go.
Hey, I, I can't hear.
Hi.
I can't hear anybody.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hey.
Yeah, hopefully.
You can't figure out how to stop recording Travis.
Okay.
Okay, there I guess. It didn't pop up a minute ago. You just had to look.